Where's Todd at?
Excuse me. If I can, please, we'd like to start the city council meeting for Monday, July 24th, 2017. Can I please have the roll call?
Mayor Viera is absent. Councilmember DeRocet.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Klein.
Here. So if you would, please, stand for the invocation given by Pastor Nathan Haley of the Victory Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge Allegiance. I don't see him. Shep, would you please do us the honor?
Our dearest heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us the abilities to meet in the greatest country in the world. We thank you for giving us the ability to speak our minds to our government, to the people who have been elected to take care of our business. We thank you for the ability to spend each day of our lives in a country that is free, a country that is of the people, for the people, and by the people. We thank you for our city council. We ask you to give them guidance and wisdom. We ask you to be with them as they make decisions. And we give thanks to you for all that you give to us. And we do this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, we have one presentation tonight. It's a proclamation declaring August 13th through 19th, 2017, as National Health Center Week for the City of Series. The proclamation reads as declaring August 13th, 13th through the 19th, 2017, as National Health Center Week. Whereas, for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventable health care in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's health care system. Whereas, the county's largest primary care network, health centers, now serve as the health care home for over 25 million Americans in over 10,000 delivery sites across the nation. Whereas, our local community health center, Golden Valley Health Centers, provide critical medical, dental, behavior, behavioral, health, pharmacy, and specialty services to 150,000 patients throughout Merced and Stanislas Counties. Whereas, health centers are locally controlled by patient majority boards, ensuring that the patients of each health center are engaged in their own health care decisions. Whereas, health centers are locally owned and operated nonprofit businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating billions of dollars in combined economic impact and creating jobs in some of the county's most economically deprived communities. Whereas, health centers continue to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, including geographic, language, income, and insurance status, and in doing so improves health care outcomes and reduces health care systems cost. Whereas, health centers reduce overall cost of care by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of costlier health care settings like hospital emergency rooms. Whereas, National Health Centers Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, their dedicated staff, boards, and all those responsible for their continued success. During this National Health Center Week, we celebrate the 45th anniversary of Golden Valley Health Centers and the vital role they play in the well-being of our community. Now, therefore, I, Mike Klein, Vice Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby proclaim August 13th through the 19th, 2017, as National Health Center Week. I encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health centers and celebrate the important partnership between America Health Centers and the patients they serve. Proclaim this 14th day of August, 2017. And we have Matt Stevens with Golden Valley Health Centers to accept.
Hi. Thank you very much. We really appreciate both the city's recognition of the incredible role that primary health care plays in our communities. We do a lot to make sure that we can understand that we serve anybody who comes to our doors, regardless of their ability to pay. We do quite a bit to overcome social, economic, and cultural barriers that may exist with our patients. We are incredibly excited to be a part of this community and look forward to for years to come. I wish that Mayor Viera was here so that I could thank him personally for the help and the support that he's personally and the city generally has given to Golden Valley Health Centers. We look forward to expanding services in the future and deepening the services that we give to our patients. Thank you again.
While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings and adopt rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council that are not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Well, I do have one speaker card here. John Warner? Can you please come up to the podium and state your name?
John Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N. I have lived here in the City of Series for 31 years and have probably been remiss in not showing up down here more than this first time. I need to address you folks in regards to a public nuisance ordinance that I feel needs to be revised and tweaked so the enforcement people that take care of these things throughout our city can have a little bit more freedom in dealing with the problem. It has to do with the blight of motor vehicles, RV vehicles, boats, trailers, utility vehicles, cargo vans that are being parked on the residential properties in view of the street. The property owners or the homeowners are parking these vehicles and trailers on their lawns. They're parking them in their driveways, and they're leaving them there for years and years and years. It causes blight in the community. It causes property damage in the form of values being depreciated. I have a problem in my neighborhood, and the enforcement folks are going to need help from the city council to add or tweak or make sure that they have the right tools to enforce these things. Nobody wants three huge cargo vans parked in the driveway of their next-door neighbor that are there on a permanent basis and used for stories of garbage and junk. It detracts the neighborhood. It's unsafe. People passing by can trip on the trailer hitches and things that are sticking out on the sidewalks. They're also parking them on the lawns. And apparently, from my understanding, there's nothing in our ordinance here, or the city has an ordinance, that prevents this from happening. They're hooking up electricity to the houses, water, and they're sub-renting these properties or these places for people to live in, which is a further problem to the city and to the residential neighbors. So I'm asking the council to look at this, okay? The ordinance is 9.40.010, and public nuisance defined. Within that, there's a lot of definitions about rodents, rats, and things that are brought to the properties because of these conditions. I know this for a fact because I trapped over 50 in the last three years. The health department will not respond and check out and help deal with the problem. So we need, as a community, to fix these things by adjusting our ordinance. It may need a new ordinance enacted. I don't know. But I know that this particular one could be adjusted to include these types of vehicles to resolve the problem. So that's what I have to ask the city council to take a look at. I'm going to take the time. I've got to go this evening, but I want to, apparently, all of you folks have emails. And I would like to be able to get your emails so I can send you a written statement document including pictures of what this one particular property looks like.
What's your address?
It's 1112-1112 Landreth, L-A-N-D-R-E-T-H Court, Modesto, 95351. I live north of the Hatch Road, and I live between Moffett and Central, just south of the Virginia Park School. My property butts up against Virginia Parks, okay? And I've had some contact with the school district over the years. Were able to work out the problems that did exist. But anyway, I thank you for your, for your time and allowing me to speak, and I hope to get this problem resolved. Thank you.
Toby, can you schedule a study session or something so we can review the thing, the ordinance? And Chief, could you please do me a favor? And now that, I know we're in a transition with code enforcement and stuff, but can you at least get code enforcement to see the area that he's talking about and see how we can address it with our current ordinance?
We already have, we have the complaint already, and there are some things we can do on the existing ordinance. We are moving forward as part of our general plan update, a comprehensive overhaul of our entire municipal code that would follow right after the general plan. So, I mean, the long-term issue of revising the ordinance to have more teeth and be in an ideal situation, that is the plan, again, as part of the comprehensive update of the general plan and the municipal code where we rewrite everything. In the short term, we can address, there's other tools that we can use to get addressing that property.
Okay. So, and what I'll do then, Mr. Wells, I'll give you this. So when we, when we do it, part of our general plan update, you can contact Mr. Warner. Okay? Councilmember Rhino?
Well, it's interesting that Mr. Warren came up and talked about this tonight because I did have, under councilman, councilmember referrals to ask about vehicle parking on a front yard because I spoke to someone other than him that had a complaint, and I turned it over to the code enforcement department. And because all of the vehicles were registered, they were okay having them parked on the front yard. But this particular home had two big boats, a van, another kind of a trailer. Their entire front yard was filled with vehicles. So my concern was, the code enforcement officer told me that because they're registered, we have nothing in our ordinance that would prohibit them from parking on front lawns. And I was going to ask the council about changing something in the ordinance, but now the city manager is saying that would be done as part of our general plan. Or can, is there something we can do prior to that?
We can change the ordinance. That's a policy direction. Our preference would be to do it comprehensively at one time and do the whole document. But if you'd like, if the council wants to do, you know, on a piecemeal, on a case-by-case basis, we can do that. It just takes time and effort.
Well, I was shocked when I went by this property, and I can't believe other neighbors haven't complained to anybody because their entire front yard was covered, excuse me, with vehicles. It was, I wouldn't want to live across the street from that.
And there's some other tools that we can utilize to encourage compliance.
Yeah, because I really think this, I agree, we should probably separate it, too. I can remember back, planning commission days, we attacked this issue, and the council didn't see it the way the planning commission seen it at that time. You remember that, Linda?
Yes.
Yeah. But it becomes a bigger issue than just sitting here today and recognizing you got an issue. I've recognized those things for a long time in this city. Unfortunately, it's gonna, it's probably gonna put a roomful of people in here when we, when we do recognize it happened before, right? But I agree, something needs to be done. So I would almost think that it would have to be almost separate, like you're saying.
Well, I think we need to address it now rather than wait until
I think so.
the general plan is completed.
Because it's, I think it's one of those, Toby, that
Well, but if you're, I mean, he's talking about public nuisance, which is a very, very broad category. So if we're going to tackle just one specific thing about vehicles parking on the lawn, that's different than the broad category that he's brought up in terms of that municipal code, which covers a whole much broader spectrum. And again, from a staff perspective, we think it's more effective to tackle that in a comprehensive manner, so we make sure we cover all of the issues, not just one at a time. But again, I take the direction from the council, what you prefer to see.
I mean, we have tow trucks. Obviously, we had a tow truck issue. Remember that a few years ago?
Right.
And I drive around, right, and there's probably 15 or 20 tow trucks
Yeah.
just sitting on the side of the road. You know, I kind of agree with what you're saying, city manager, because what's, what's gonna happen is this, is if we can enforce what we can enforce right now and maybe just put a little teeth into it, and we got the general plan thing happening, I think that's a better route right now. But again, we have one code enforcement person.
Correct.
And so, you know, there's a lot of tickets that we could write right now, I guarantee you, because of what's out there.
I guess my concern is that when we're going through this whole general plan update, that issues that are brought up in this case, or the person that contacted me, somehow are going to be kind of forgotten about because we're going to be looking at all the other items in the general plan update. That would just be my concern.
As a comment, please. 2013 is when I started kind of working on this problem, okay? And it's when a 53-foot sealand container arrived at this residence. We all know what those are. They go on ocean ships, and they go on the back of trucks. He slid that puppy right down on side of his property, two inches from my fence, and the rats came. In 13, to this date, he was issued some citations. The enforcement gentleman is not, he's off injured right now. And he finally wrote me a note, and I've got my notes in the last four years that I've dealt with the chief of police at the time and Frank, that he said, finally, he said, "The city attorney told me we cannot enforce this code." So he's doing all this work, and he doesn't have anything in place that he can enforce. So why go out and do all the work if you can't do anything in the end? Okay? I was told, and I have the documentation, that they were going to have a meeting, the fire chief, the code guys, the city attorney, and they were going to sit down and resolve the issue and change it. And four years ago, folks, it hasn't been changed yet. So trying to do something now, when my neighbor John, all he's gonna do is take those three trailers, and he's gonna stuff them on his front lawn. He's gonna move them from where he's got them, and it's gonna create more of a hazard, and you don't have anything in place that can deal with that. You can't go out and threaten a man with something that you don't have an enforcement code to enforce, and you don't have anything in place to take care of those problems. So looking at the general plan, whenever that's gonna change, you know, there's gonna be a ton of people in here that are gonna be upset. But, too bad. Okay? Clean up your properties, make them look presentable, don't treat your neighbors poorly. None of you folks would like that. So that's why I'm here. I'm 2013 today, it's four years, you haven't changed anything, and it was promised. I have it in writing. Okay? So that's why I'm here. I know the problems throughout the city. I can go around and inundate the code guy with work. They're not supposed to have these sealand containers. I can go show you four of them right now within driving distance of right here. Okay? All these covers, car covers, carport covers, I'm told that you can't have in this city. I know where 50 of them are without driving out of my own neighborhood. The code guy drives by these things every day, the previous one took no action on any of that stuff that he should have been doing. Let's fix the problem and move forward. That's what I'm asking you folks to do, not wait to do some general plan down the road.
Toby, I'd like to see something in regards to, hang on, one sec. In regards to what's there, right? So if you could email me what we can do and what we can't do, and then
On this specific address?
No, on just the specific ordinances that we have, the codes that we have. Can you park an RV on the side of the road? No.
Well, for a period of time.
Right, 72 hours.
Correct.
Can you have two boats on your lawn?
If they're registered according to the code enforcement officer, you can.
If they're registered.
And you can have, and you can have your entire front yard covered in vehicles.
You're asking for a general description of the current
I'm asking just for a general description, so then I can sit there, because I live right on the corner from you.
Again, the nuisance has a broad category that we can enforce, nuisance, and that's up to, up to determine. There is not a specific category to deal with every potential situation you could think of, but there is a broad definition that we can attempt to enforce, and we have been successful in the past in other situations. Again, from 2013, two things have changed. One, we have a different city manager, and we also have a different city attorney. So there are some provisions that we can attempt to tackle that I would rather do a case-by-case basis to address this specific issue as we deal with the collective issue. So I see it from two perspectives, but I'd be happy to send you the ordinance.
Well, I do, I do understand where you're coming from, Mr. Wells, but I also am really understanding where Councilmember Rhino's coming from, that if we wait until we do the general plan, you know, there's so many things that are in the general plan, there's an opportunity for it to get, get lost or not discussed enough.
This wouldn't be part of the general plan. It will follow the general plan as a comprehensive municipal code update, where we'll be talking every ordinance and revising the entire document so that it is consistent internally and externally so we eliminate all of these issues at one time.
And I do follow what you're saying, but I do agree with Councilmember Rhino. I think this needs to be addressed separately so we can have a lengthy discussion, so we can take care of it. You know, as Mr. Warren said, that there's gonna be probably quite a few people here that are gonna be upset with it, and this is one that we're gonna spend some time with. So I think that, you know, from my perspective, then I think that we need to address this separately, and we need to try to do something with it and get this thing going forward so it doesn't get discussed and then, in the short term. So, now, that's, that's my feeling. I don't know how the other council feels. You know, if we need to look at it a little bit separately and get this thing, you know, going, what's, what's the rest of council decide?
What would be the timeline as far as even, I know you're, you've pretty, got a pretty full docket right now, but, I mean, are we gonna be looking close to the timeline when the general plan's done to be able to
Yeah, based on current staffing level with, and what I'm forecasting items and agenda with the general plan and other items that are in the short term, you're probably talking as soon as I get a discussion item here, probably late October to beginning November? Discussion item?
That would be good for me.
Okay. So let's shoot, let's shoot for late October because we're getting into, you know, if we can, if we can do it in the second, to say, the second meeting in October? This shoot for it, I'm saying?
Recognize this as an ordinance change. So a discussion item, public hearing notice, first reading, second reading, 30 days effective name, is, you know, you're talking about four months after you give us direction before it's effective, which is going to be similar timeframe to when we would be looking at it for the, our hope for the general plan was the adoption in early 2018.
Regardless, that's the way it's
That's the target. But, I mean, the municipal code's gonna follow after that. It's a longer period of time. But just for overall perspective, we would expect this effort to start on the municipal code update to start in spring of 2018, and, you know, likely, our best case would be having something specific here addressed by, you know, January.
Well, I'm, I'm good, I'm good to get it started October.
Me, too.
Okay. So.
Just so you know, Vice Mayor, Kenny is working with Mr. Warren on the, on the issue. It goes a little deeper than just the cars parked there, however, there are multiple families living in a single-family rental home, which is why those vehicles are, they're not abandoned. I think they're drivable, I think. Okay, we are, we are working with him on it, so.
And I know you get a lot of text messages from me
I do.
About, about blight and, and things like that because, you know, I, I get people telling me all over town that the city, dah 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 dah, you know, we're trying to do an interchange, and we're trying to get everything else done, and, you know, we just want to try to stay on top of it. Okay? Is there anybody else that would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item?
You betcha. I'm not sure exactly what date it was that that ordinance was passed, but I know for myself, Steve Breckenridge, and about 20 other people, we worked very hard to write that ordinance to keep the city and any government from taking our personal property rights away from us. Sorry, Linda, and everybody else, but if I own a piece of property, and I have a lawn in there, and I decide I want to park my motorhome, my motorcycle, and a pickup with a camper on it, on that lawn, that's my lawn, that's my property, and keep your hands off. We worked on that because a former mayor, Louis Arallo, wanted to take everybody's rights away to have their personal property and say, you have to, if you have a motorhome, it has to be stored in a storage unit. If you have a pickup with a camper shell, it can't be on your property because it's a recreational vehicle. Don't ever, ever, ever give up one single solitary right. Once you do, you have become a slave to the government. You guys have been doing pretty darn good, but right now, oh, you got on my fighting side. And I can tell you without any doubt that we can fill 150 people into this building for our property rights. I live in a mobile home park. I rent a space. They have certain rules and regulations. I know that because I chose to live there. If I lived in the city, city be damned if you're gonna take my property and my rights to have it. All kinds of things that government tries to do to people to keep them from owning and controlling their own property. Ask Don Donaldson. Ask Don Donaldson about the property he had to give up. When he was told that his motorhome couldn't be plugged into his electrical system so he could keep the battery up so whenever he wanted to go anywhere in it, he could get in it and drive off? Beware, government, beware. What happened in 17, the 1770s? The people of this country were British citizens, but they got tired of being walked on by a government. Read our constitution. Read it carefully. We have the right as citizens to rise up and take control of our destiny. I think you guys are pretty level-headed, but don't start trying to take away our rights. What do you think our courts are for? If your property value as a property owner, you put it on the market, and people come by and look at it and say, I'm buying here because of those guys over there, then you get an attorney, and you go after those guys over there because they've devalued your property. That's your right. That's your right. Don't ask the government to do it. Everybody's ready to have the government do something for them, instead of getting off their fat behinds and doing it themselves. I know the red light's going to come on, but the lights didn't even come on for this gentleman, and I'm going to demand my right as a citizen to be able to talk a little bit longer than five minutes.
They did come on for him, and then the council started discussing the item. We started discussing the item, and he stayed up there while the discussion was made.
Okay, I'll go for that, but beware, don't tread on our property rights.
Dave Pratt of Series. I think I'm going to give you a little good news. Seems like I had a whole lot of stuff too, but I'm going to, I gave each one of you a flyer for our Veterans Stand Down that's coming up October 26th, because part of you are in a group that's donated, donated, and, and those that don't know what a Veterans Stand Down is, is we try to get the homeless veterans off the street for at least one day, get them help, and hopefully that we might be able to get them off the street. And our event, our event, there's many people that are involved, and so it's not just a one-group thing, it's a whole, it's actually, you might as well, a whole, a whole lot of groups are participating in this to try to, to help them. And I realize there's some, you're going to find those that don't want help, but hopefully they will. Okay, so, I know you got a new code enforcer, and he's going to be busy for a long time, and I hope he doesn't, it's not this one area. You know, I ride, you know, I ride my bike twice a week, and I see the same piles, stuff piled up week after week, and sometimes months, and hopefully some of that stuff will start clearing up. A lot of times, these people, they put out furniture and other stuff that they're supposed to call first and put it out, and then they're supposed to get picked up, but I see that doesn't happen. Also, I see a lot of carts. There's one, oh, before that, I see Walmarts finally cleaned up their mosquito pond, they drained it out, and they're, they're cleaning up, they cleaned up the weeds inside and outside the fence around that. I don't know what they're going to do to continue, which is good, because everybody needs to contribute, they can't have standing water because of the mosquitoes. They're saying there's all kinds of diseases going on right now, and a lot of times on my bike ride, I see a lot of dead birds. So the less we chance for them to breed, the better off we are. You have one business that has locking wheels on their carts. I would like to see that more businesses, new business, and even though, start converting into locking wheels on their carts. I find some of these carts miles away from their businesses. Lot of times they're filled with all kinds of junk, and sometimes, some people tell me, tell me, well, there's people, that's the only way they can get their groceries home. Well, you know, that'd be fine if they brought the carts back, but they leave it piled up somewheres, somewheres and get another cart. But there's people out there, if they need help to get their groceries home and stuff, there's help, and there's no need to have all these carts out there. I see all of them along the canals, but they're just begging to be pushed in the canals.
Don Donaldson, 2305 Joey Avenue. And I guess I am one that, that got a seven-hundred-and-some-dollar fine for having motorhomes and air conditioners and... But Louis Aralo and the, the, the City Council had a big meeting on this, and if you own a motorhome, and if it's in a driveway on concrete, then it can stay there. So I poured twenty yards of concrete and planted new, new grass with sprinkler system, and put my motorhomes on and everything on concrete, so weeds and everything can't grow underneath the motorhome. I plugged it in, and the, the TID said you can as long as it UL approved cords and, and everything. So, I mean, it's a discrepancy, it's, it's, it's something that we, that Alcatraz and I thought for, for a long time, but he's, he had something against me, and he kept going for five years. I try to, I own all three houses together, so don't say, well, the neighbor's going to, because I'll kick them out if they say anything to you. So that's a privilege that I have, but I've worked long, 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 long time, and a lot of you know that I've been around here since seventy-two, seventy-three. I've worked hard for them motorhomes. I worked hard for that boat. I worked hard for what I have. I don't park my motorhomes or anything on the grass because we had a code that you couldn't do that. Rob said that he didn't want concrete like he did down Whitmore Avenue in them apartments. So fifty percent of your lawn can't be in concrete. Okay, that's what I did. So everything that I've tried to do, I've tried to do with the City Council, Louis Aralo, and had, whenever I did that. And I did have air conditioners. I own four houses, and I bought ten air conditioners at the same time. You can get a good big break, but they was out there, and I take parts off of them and put them on other people's houses. It was, I saw for a lot of people, but I kept them in the back. That's what I do. That's what I did. I had to make a little extra money so I could buy another motorhome, to piss the wife off. That's how you make your wife mad, is whenever you buy something that you don't need. But the point is, both of my motorhomes is ready to go, and I called up there at Mariposa and asked if they needed anything, any motorhomes or any place for anybody to stay while the fire was going on. They said, no, not right now, because it's the end of, I should have called a lot, a lot longer. So we have a person that comes up here and says that if you're homeless, you can sleep in your car on the sidewalk. And you know, Mike, you have people in vans, if they sleep in a motorhome, they have a bathroom, they have a shower, they have a place to wash their hands, and they don't go to the bathroom on the sidewalk, right there by your house, right up and down the street on Shushan, you know that they do that. So a motorhome is okay as long as it's used the way that it's supposed to be used for. I want you people, whenever you make these laws, to understand that that's what they're for. If you're sixty days or thirty days, I think Mr. Westbrook knows, thirty days, or, or if you go through the city and get an extra, you can do that, but you have to do it the right way. You have to park your stuff on the lawn if you have permission. You can't park it on the lawn and mess up somebody else's yard across the street. It's not, and I'm even against that. Okay? So that's one thing. And here's another thing, is everybody knows that I'm a Vietnam veteran. I served three tours in Vietnam. I had to prove that I was in Vietnam, so Friday they finally conceded and said, yes, Mr. Donaldson, you're a Vietnam veteran after nineteen-sixty-five. So Friday, the, the United States said that I was a Vietnam veteran and approved my benefits after that long.
Mr. Donaldson? If we could get you to wrap up, your red light came on.
I am, yes, yes, I am. I'm going right now. After fifty years, a red light.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the City Council? With nobody, okay, so we'll continue. There's no appointments to the boards or commissions? Anybody on the City Council would like to declare a conflict of interest? I see none. Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of the staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anybody on the City Council that'd like to pull an item?
I gotta pull three because I wasn't here.
Pull what?
Three.
Three? Okay. Any other one? Is there anybody in the public that'd like to pull?
Yes, five C.
Five B?
C.
Five, five C?
Yes, five C.
Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion?
Move for approval of items one, two, four, five, A, B, D, E, six, seven, and eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And we have an abstention by...
Yes, by Councilmember DeRosset.
DeRosset.
Okay.
Motion passes three, one with one abstention, Councilmember DeRosset.
And one absent. Okay, item number three, it was pulled by Councilmember DeRosset because he was absent. Before we go any further with that, I would like to make a note that there's been a revision on the minutes because it was caught on, on, on a vote on, I had it written down, item number...
Item nine.
Nine? So was listed as far as what, what the vote turnout was. So any discussion on item number three? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, item number three.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
And I apologize, that previous motion, I got those backwards.
That's right.
Councilmember DeRosset abstain, abstention. Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes three, one absent, and one abstention by Councilmember DeRosset.
And we changed the other one right to, to four?
I'll change that, yes.
I just, I just thought of that too, so... Okay, with that, Mr. Shepherd, five C.
I just wanted to know what's going on with that big piece of property there. Is it making us any money, or is it costing us? What's, what's going on? Because I haven't heard anything for a long time. We used to get a report from, she just walked in the door a minute ago, my brain went dead.
Miss Lisa Montero Moore?
Yes, that's it, Lisa, yes. And I haven't heard anything since the last time she came in and gave her report. Are we making, breaking, or losing?
I will let Mr. Wells, since it's his report, address you.
Thank you.
So on a quarterly basis, we report this information, so this is the summary of what's been going on for the six months, basically, of this calendar year. So for this year, starting February through the end of June, the, or, I'm sorry, through July, there actually is a positive income for the mansion, so the expenditures are about eleven-hundred dollars, and the revenue was three-thousand dollars. So it's net positive for the six-month period of time. Over the course of the past four and a half years, it's approximately twenty-three thousand dollars that have been expended by the city over the full four-and-a-half-year period of time. The agreement that was last amended by this City Council was for a three-year agreement, so we are in, basically, a year and a half into that three-year agreement. It will be up for renewal in January of 2019, so we have one more year after the terms of that agreement.
Well, I'm glad to see it is being used, and I'm glad to see that maybe it's going to make a little bit of money instead of being a very large pit that you throw dollars in. Thank you.
Welcome. Anybody else who'd like to address the item?
Speaking from the large pit, I'm Lisa Montero Moore, and I'm the president of the Whitmore Mansion Foundation. I'm responsible to keep maintenance on the pit over there on Fifth Street. Sorry, Lynn, I find that a little offensive with respect to property rights, calling it a pit. There's a lot of people, I was, before I came here, I have people gardening in the yard, so those kind of comments are a little off-putting when most of the work that's done at the mansion is done by volunteers. So with all due respect for the people who sit on the committee and the people that we serve in the community, throwing negative comments towards the mansion, and I get them from people all over the place, it's like I have the city bugged. It works very hard to provide a service for the community, and we are very happy this year, we've been able to kind of bring our cost in a little bit with respect to electricity and power, which is the biggest pool from the city on a monthly basis, as we try to manage all those things by, I have to replace the air conditioning and other, other items, but we, we don't have a, a covered facility, if you will, for weddings and showers, and it's a little warm here during the summertime, so wadi months for the city of Series and outdoor facilities are more September, October, November, rather than May, June, and July. So it's a little quieter over there because it's so darn hot. But with that said, the mansion is growing, and thank you, Jeremy, for helping with that big sprinkler problem that broke in the corner, and we have some recent activity with repairing some of our trees that have taken hit with the difficult weather. So out with the old, in with the new, if you will, in the coming days. So it's busy, we try to keep it clean, and we try to protect the integrity of downtown. So, any questions?
No, just a comment. Lisa, for one, I'd like to thank you. You put a lot of, lot of hours into what I, what I call is history in Series that we're trying to preserve, and you put your heart into it, I know, and so thank you for that. And yes, we all have worked down there and, and continue to do so. In fact, you just had a work day.
I think your shift's this weekend again.
I think so, right? Yeah, so, anyway, but very proud of it. With the little budget we have down there, I think we're doing a tremendous job, and it is growing, so I know there's some, quite a few weddings coming up here in the near future too, so, anyway, with that, just a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the City Council for a motion.
Move to approve five C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember DeRosset?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, one.
Okay, with that being, we have no unfinished business, no public hearing, no new business, no discussion items. Do I have any council member referrals? I see none. Reports? I have nothing to report.
I have, I have nothing.
Mr. Lane?
Nothing.
Mr. DeRosset? Ms. Dean? Mr. Hallam?
Hi, ma'am.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, just to follow up on a, a great event this weekend here at our Whitmore Park and the surrounding area, the Series Chamber put on the barbecue bands and brews little festival. For those who attended, it was a great event, very well-attended, and some fantastic ribs, for those of you who didn't get a chance to sample, there was some really good stuff, and the cold beverages were, were pretty good, too. So again, a great event, thanks to the Chamber for all their efforts putting that together. Then to update items, just the Centennial Committee is meeting tomorrow evening here at the, here in the conference room at 5:30 tomorrow night, and then Measure H Committee will be on Wednesday evening.
Thank you. Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, just to follow on Toby's comments about the barbecue event, very successful, a lot of hard work went into that, but I think it was pulled off and enjoyed by the community members. Did want to mention that we're in the presence of greatness this evening. The 2017 rib eating champion is in the audience tonight, and that's none other than Ms. Sheila Brandt.
Mr. Klein, just a reminder that Forest Street is still open, and construction is continuing. We're going to be seeing a lot of curb and gutter go down, as well as sidewalks beginning to get poured this week as we make progress on downtown.
That's good news, thank you. Chief? Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dumas? Mr. DiMartini?
I have something tonight that I'd like to...
Well, and I'm going to jump, Ms. Brandt, is there anything you'd like to make, a comment on your...
That's wild, right?
(laughing) With that being said, I'll adjourn the council meeting to close session, and the next City Council meeting on August 28th.
Let's go.
Let's go do it.
Let's do this, let's do this.
Gotta love it.